This meeting of the City University of New York's Board of Trustees is now called to order. Everyone should take a moment to mute their cell phones. CUNY TV is transmitting the public sessions of this meeting live on the CUNY Board of Trustees website at www.cuny.edu/livestream. I now move that this meeting convene an executive session pursuant to Article VII, Section 105 of the Public Officers' Law to discuss matters pertaining to personnel, investigations, and litigation. May I have a second?
Second.
Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
We are in executive session. We will reconvene in public session following executive session. On December 4th, 2023, the Board of Trustees took a public hearing regarding the items on the calendar agenda for the December 11th, 2023 Board of Trustees meeting. Twenty-five people registered to testify and seventeen people were present to testify in person. Twenty people submitted written testimony. The first written testimony was submitted by a student in support of calendar item 3A to authorize contract renewal with VSB Software, Inc. for an automated course scheduler system. The remaining testimony was submitted by students and faculty to address item 2C, continued reform of governance and administrative policies and practices to enhance transparency and accountability of the City University of New York and corporate divestment in Israel, accountability from the Chancellery, and the Board of Trustees to keep students safe on campus, and then the protection of free speech. As always, the testimony has been shared with the Board and the Chancellery as well as posted to the trustees' website. Trustees have been busy since we last met. Vice Chair Sandra Wilken and Trustee Arvinides participated in the New York Community College Trustees Conference in early November. They have both been instrumental in re-establishing our relationship with their fellow trustees on community college boards across the state. Let me thank the both of them for the work that they've done. Trustee Vivalo has also been very busy. He recently toured Queens College as part of his efforts to see all of the campuses in our system. I'd also like to thank Chair, Vice Chair Wilken, trustees O'Donnell Tormi, Cortez Vasquez, and former trustee Shorter for their efforts on the Hunter College Search Committee. Thank you very much. We will be launching several searches this spring, as we've all just talked about, and will keep, and I'm sure will keep all of us very busy. Chancellor?
Thank you, Chair Thompson, and trustees, vice presidents, and vice chancellors.
You remain in one day genocide through its invasion.
It's been a fine, but a very productive fall, and I have a lot of good news to share with you.
Could you please sit down, please?
... and the broader Zionist settler colonial project. We demand that the Board of Trustees advised by boycott, divest, and sanction resolution of all students.
I'm going to ask you one more time to please sit down.
The Board of Trustees must divest from weapons manufacturers and Israeli companies. No more money for apartheid. No more funding genocide. Divest from death, invest in life.
So, as I was saying, that we have a very productive fall, and I have some good news to share with all your board members. Thanksgiving began, the holiday season of giving, and for the fifth consecutive year, our supporters raised the bar on the generosity. For CUNY Tuesday, our colleges and programs have so far received $3.89 million in donations from 4,800--
Just, as individuals, people should understand, as they disrupt this meeting, we're going to have to have you removed. We're going to ask you to leave the room, so--
In 2016, the first boycott education act was passed by--
Yes. As I was saying, that for the fifth consecutive year, our supporters raised the bar on the generosity. CUNY Tuesday broke records from the last couple of years. We received $3.89 million in donations, and 4,875 individuals donated, the largest numbers that we've ever had. And those numbers significantly outpace both the number of donors and the amount given as of this time last year, and we are extremely appreciative. There's still time to donate. You can go to cunytuesday.org. Hopefully also, you have all heard the wonderful news that CUNY Reconnect, our initiative to re-engage New Yorkers who stopped coming to college before completing a degree, has now re-enrolled 26,000 students, and 1,600 have already graduated. Of those enrolled through CUNY Reconnect--
Yeah.
--63% are at least 24 years old.
We're just going to clear the room.
Al Aqsa University was destroyed for money that CUNY invested in Israel. How can you stay quiet as the Holocaust advances on 1.1 million children trapped in Gaza? Think with your hearts, think with your consciousness. Invest in life, don't get--
Divest from death, invest in life.
Divest from death, invest in life. Divest from death, invest in life. Divest from death, invest in life. Divest from death, invest in life. Divest from death, invest in life. Divest from death, invest in life. Divest from death, invest in life. Divest from death, invest in life. Divest from death, invest in life. Divest from death, invest in life.
Al Quds Open University, CUNY money, and able to destruction of Al Quds Open University. Divest from death, invest in life. Divest from death, invest in life. You all should be ashamed of yourselves. You're helping to fund the genocide. Over 20,000 people have died.
Moving right along. Meanwhile-- Meanwhile-- Chancellor, going back.
Thank you. I missed-- I missed the standard student presentations that we have before I go in my remarks. As I was saying, wonderful news on CUNY Reconnect. We have re-enrolled 26,000 students, and 1,600 have already graduated. Of those enrolled through CUNY Reconnect, 63 are at least 25 years old, 15% are at least 36, and nearly 82 live in the city outside of Manhattan. This good news was announced by the City Council Speaker Adrian Arns, who conceived and championed the program at a recent ribbon cutting of York's College's new Welcome Center. We are grateful to the mayor and the City Council for this year's financial boost of $1.4 million for CUNY Reconnect. I am also delighted to share that freshman applications for the fall 2024 semester have reached nearly 41,000 in October, an increase of nearly 400% from last October. This amazing jump was driven by our welcome letter and the application fee where we initiated, an initiative that was championed by this board, and by simultaneously promoting CUNY during admission seasons in our large marketing campaign, "A Degree for Every Dream", which you can still spot around the city and beyond. Earlier today, I joined Mayor Adams for the announcement of this new initiative to build inclusive career pipelines called Pathways to an Inclusive Economy. It includes a $10 million investment to expand CUNY 2X Tech, our successful program that connects students with tech internships and prepares them to apply for jobs. This support would allow us to expand the CUNY 2X Tech programs to five campuses and to make it available to all our community colleges for the first time. Last month, we launched CUNY Cares, a three-year pilot program on our Bronx campuses that would boost academic success by providing integrated access to health care, mental health treatment, food, and housing assistance. The program recruits, trains, and pays students to work as peer advocates, spreading the word about campus and community resources, and helping students apply for government benefits like SNAP and Medicaid. CUNY Cares has the potential to bring an additional $25 million in government benefits to our Bronx students. Our new strategic roadmap prioritizes the development of new high-impact initiatives so we can boost student outcomes and eliminate academic equity gaps. This is why we have announced a partnership with the National Institute for Student Success, which uses data-driven research to improve student retention, graduation rates, and achievement, and to conduct a comprehensive assessment of five of our colleges. The goal of the fourth-month process is to develop a CUNY-wide strategy that will help us to develop new programs to eliminate achievement gaps and reduce obstacles to graduation, and I commend University Provost Wendy Hensel for leading that initiative. And now let me shift to my usual speed round of some of the awards and accolades that have been piling up this fall. Six CUNY colleges, Baruch, City College, CSI, Hunter, LaGuardia, and Queens College have been named 2023 Fulbright Hispanic Serving Institution Leaders, the most of any university system in the nation. Not only that, but nearly half of the Fulbright HSI leaders in New York State come from CUNY schools. The financial news company 247 Wall Street recently released its list of the 50 colleges offering the most upward mobility, and CUNY accounts for nearly half of the schools in the top 10. Using data from the U.S. Department of Education, Baruch ranked first in the nation, and Lehman, City College, Brooklyn, and Queens College each made the top 10. The list also includes John Jay, York, Hunter, City Tech, and Medgar Evers. Congratulations to our colleagues in CUNY TV for winning six New York Emmy Awards, bringing the station's total Emmy count to 41. We're running out of space in the lobby to have all those Emmys.
I'm sure they'll find additional--
Five CUNY community colleges, BMCC, Ostos, Kingsborough, LaGuardia, and Queensborough, have been named among the top 150 community colleges in the nation by the Aspen Institute, making them eligible to compete for the 2025 Aspen Prize for Community College Excellence, considered the highest recognition for community college achievement in the nation. Congratulations to Bronx Community College, which won the inaugural Bronx Green Action Challenge, which comes with a $1 million sustainability grant funded by the New York Power Authority. In early November, I attended a symposium at Trinity Church titled "University of Hope: Supporting Student Needs at Scale." The Petrie Foundation, Robinhood, and Trinity Church Wall Street came together to bring attention to the needs of CUNY students, including housing and food insecurity, as a way to highlight these issues more generically and to attract other funders and brainstorm solutions with policymakers and government partners. I'm excited to welcome Dr. Rosemary Weston, a chemical engineer who started as Associate Vice Chancellor and University Vice Provost for Research on December 1st. She comes from City College, where she served as Associate Provost for Research, and she brings decades of leadership experience with the National Science Foundation and in the private and higher-end sectors. I also hope that you will join me in bidding a fond farewell to York's College outgoing president, Dr. Bernicia Johnson Ince. We are grateful to Bernicia for her strong leadership that always prioritized student success, as well as her steady guidance during the difficult days of the pandemic. She will be the ninth president of Cal State LA and the first woman to serve in that position. We wish Claudia all the best, and I think we can give her a big round of applause to show our appreciation. I want to shift gears and talk about some of the things we're doing to address discrimination on some of our campuses and to promote greater understanding among our community members. Since last year, we have committed $1.3 million to combating hate and antisemitism. We are grateful to the New York City Council for its recent allocation of $550,000 to expand anti-hate initiatives on our campuses. We believe that education is one of the best tools for fighting bias, and we remain committed to rooting out antisemitism, Islamophobia, and other types of discriminations and bigotry in our campuses. I want to congratulate City Tech and its Ursula Schwering Library for being one of just 50 libraries in the country selected to host Americans and the Holocaust, a traveling exhibition from the U.S. Holocaust Memorial Museum. I was fortunate to visit the opening of this thought-provoking exhibit, which examines the motives, pressures, and fears that shaped Americans' responses to the Nazis during the 1930s and 40s, and asks difficult questions that remain relevant today. I would urge all of you to visit the exhibit before it ends on December 17th. Speaking of questions that remain relevant today, let me reinforce our position that hate and discrimination, including calls for the genocide of any group, have no place at the City University of New York. Let there be no misunderstanding, such as expressions are incompatible with basic decency, our shared CUNY values, and with our policies. CUNY is committed to protecting all members of our community and building on our efforts in combating antisemitism, Islamophobia, and all forms of bigotry from our campuses. It is my hope, and I hope that is probably shared by many here, that the new year will bring a resolution to the conflict in the Middle East, and that a path to peace emerges from the Israel-Hamas war. On a final note, I want to wish our students, particularly our student trustee, the very best in their final exams, projects, and papers season that begins this week. Right? And to everyone here in our system, I want to wish you a joyful holiday season with family and friends, and that includes a happy Hanukkah to those celebrating this week. I hope that over the holidays, everyone gets a chance to rest, recharge, and recommit to the important work that we all do, lifting our students, faculty, and staff every day. And that, Mr. Chairman, concludes my report.
And I know that we'd like to echo happy holidays to everybody, a happy and healthy and restful holiday to all of us, because we all could use a break. Let's now turn to items requiring a vote today. Item number one, the draft meant to the regular board meeting and the executive session of October 23rd, 2023. I'd like to move item number one. May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion on the minutes? All right, we'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved. Item number two, the Committee on Audit and Compliance. I call on Committee Chair Kevin Kim to present and move the following items.
Thank you, Chairman. The Board Committee on Audit and Compliance considered the following matter at its meeting on October 30th, 2023, which I will now present to the Board. Item 2A is a resolution to approve the fiscal year 2023 audited financial statements. The committee approved the draft fiscal year 2023 audited financial statements, and the clean opinion was issued on November 3rd, 2023 by the university's auditors, Grant Thornton. Mr. Chairman, I present item 2A for the Board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, we'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's been approved.
Item 2B is a resolution to approve the internal audit plan for fiscal year 2024. Mr. Chairman, I present item 2B for the Board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, we'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Finally, item 2C is a resolution to approve continued reform of governance and administrative policies and practices to enhance transparency and accountability of the City University of New York. Mr. Chairman, I present item 2C for the Board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? I will now vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Kim. Item number three, the Committee on Finance and Administration. Let me call on Committee on Finance and Administration Chair Henry Berger to present and move the following items.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. The Board Committee on Finance and Administration considered the following matters at its meeting on November 20, 2023, which I will now present to the Board. Item 3A is a resolution to authorize a contract renewal with VSB Software, Inc. for an automated case scheduler system. The university would like to exercise the renewal option to continue having the use of the system for an additional five years, from January 8, 2024 through January 7, 2029, for an amount not to exceed $1,408,500. Mr. Chairman, I present item 3A for the Board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item? Any discussion? All right, we'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item 3B is a resolution to authorize a contract extension with Anthology, Inc. for customer relations management software. The existing contract for the subscription with Anthology, Inc. expired on October 14, 2023. The university is seeking a two-year contract extension in an amount not to exceed $1,617,657.23
There you go.
--for the period of October 15, 2023 to October 14, 2024, an amount not to exceed $1,682,363,052 cents for the period of October 15, 2024 to October 14, 2025, with a total not to exceed the amount of $3,300,020.75 for this contract extension. Mr. Chairman, I present item 3B for the Board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion other than the fact that you wish that they would round up or round down in the sense--
I think under circumstances, we have to be very careful with our pennies, so--
Any discussion on this item? All right, we'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item 3C is a resolution to authorize a contract extension with Anthology, Inc. to add access to Ally for digital accessibility and inclusivity for D2L Bright Space LMS. The university is seeking to extend access to Anthology and Ally for our new learning management system, D2L Bright Space. The proposed contract extension would be issued as a single-source procurement, as Anthology is proprietor of the Ally software, for a period of five years from December 1, 2023 to December 30, 2028, for a cost not to exceed $2,520,833. No cents.
And zero cents.
So, you're presenting item 3C for the Board's consideration?
Yes. Carry on.
May I have a second for this item? Second. Any discussion? We'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Moving right along. Item 3D is a resolution to authorize a contract with GuideHouse to provide organizational change management services to support the finance and human capital management ERP implementation. The university is proposing to enter into a two-year and six-month contract with GuideHouse for organizational change management services to support the SAAS ERP project for an amount not to exceed $3,411,380, with an additional $341,138 for contingency for combined not to exceed the amount of $3,752,518. Mr. Chairman, I present item 3D for the Board's consideration, and this is really important for the implementation of this system, which has been in the works for a while.
A while.
So, I present it.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion on the item? All right, let's now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item 3E is a resolution to authorize a contract with GuideHouse to provide project monitoring, quality assurance services to support the finance and human capital management ERP implementation. The university is proposing to enter into a two-year and six-month contract with GuideHouse for project management, quality assurance services to support the SAAS ERP system for an amount of $4,631,970, with an additional $463,197 for contingency, for a combined not to exceed amount of $5,095,167. Mr. Chairman, I present item 3E for the Board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item 3F is a resolution to approve the Personnel Matters Report of the Finance and Administration Committee. The October 2023 Personnel Managers Report is generated from employee data entered into the university's system of record between September 1, 2023, and October 13, 2023, and does not contain appointments that have been submitted as individual resolutions. The report contains a total of 18 ECP actions, including three regular appointments, three interim appointments, one title change, one salary increase, and 10 resignations. Mr. Chairman, I present item 3F for the Board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? We'll move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item 3G through 3JJ are resolutions to appoint regular and interim members of the executive compensation plan, which I am summarizing by college and then presenting as a group for the Board's consideration. If anybody would like to pull out any individual for consideration, please say so; otherwise, we will vote on them as a group. For the Borough of Manhattan Community College, which are policy items 3W and 3X, Julio Ischierda as interim vice president of administration planning, and Karen Wilson as interim vice president for institutional advancement. For Brooklyn College, policy item 3K, 3M, 3N, and 3O. April Bedford as interim senior vice president and provost for academic affairs. Stephanie Jensen-Malton, interim dean for the School of Visual Media and Performing Arts. Philip Napoli, interim dean of the School of Humanities and Social Sciences. And Maria Sharon Del Rio, interim dean of the School of Education. At the Central Office, policy item 3Q, Galia Galansky as the interim associate vice chancellor of university human resources. City College, policy item 3G, Renata Corbett Miller as dean of the Division of Humanities and the Arts. College of Staten Island, policy items 3Y and 3BB. Michael Dreher as interim dean of the School of Health Sciences. Michael Hodge as interim vice president for student affairs and strategic initiatives. Michael Stiper as interim provost and senior vice president, and Burnett Joyner, interim dean of the School of Education. Gutman College, Gutman Community College, policy item 3H, 3DD, and 3EE. Daniel Ambrose as vice president of enrollment management and student affairs. Nicola Blake as interim provost and vice president of academic affairs, and Daniel Collins as interim dean of faculty and academic affairs. Hunter College, items 3P and 3FF. Robert Domanski as interim dean for institutional effectiveness, and Jessica Alvarez as interim executive counsel and labor designee. John Jay College, policy items 3I, 3R, 3CC, 3GG through 3JJ. Christopher Schultz, vice president of institutional effectiveness and strategy. Daniel Matos, interim vice president for enrollment and student affairs. Allison Pease, interim vice president for academic affairs and provost. Janice Diaz as interim dean of student academic engagement and retention. Angela Crossman as interim dean of faculty. Nancy Torres as interim associate provost and dean for institutional effectiveness, and Andrew Sidman as interim dean of academic programs. Kingsborough Community College, policy item 3J, Colleen Davy as dean of institutional research, assessment, and effectiveness. Lehman College, policy items 3L, 3S, 3T, and 3V. Deanna Hurley as dean of the School of Business. Jorge P. Silva Cortez as interim provost and senior vice president for academic affairs. Teticita Levy as interim dean of arts and humanities. Richard Finger as vice president for enrollment management. And Queens College, policy item 3U, Simone Yearwood, interim dean of arts and humanities. Mr. Chairman, I present items 3G through 3JJ for the Board's consideration. If anybody else has, needs to be appointed, just let me know. If anybody else needs to be appointed, just let me know.
You disappointed the entire system. May I have a second for this item? Any discussion? If anybody has any questions after Henry just had to read all of that. All right, let's now move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Those items are approved.
I thank the committee for having gone through all of these at length. And thankfully, that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee. Item number four, Committee on Education Policy. I call on Committee on Education Policy Chair Jill O'Donnell-Torme to present and move the following items.
Mr. Chairman, the Board Committee on Education Policy considered the following matters at its meeting on November 20, 2023, which I will now present to the board. Item 4A1 is a resolution to establish a program in nurse anesthesia, adult gerontology, acute care, leading to the Doctor of Nursing Practice at Hunter College. Mr. Chairman, I present item 4A1 for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item? Any discussion? Now move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item 4B1 is a resolution to amend the Queens College Academic Senate Charter. Mr. Chairman, I present item 4B1 for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? Let's move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Items 4C1 through 4C9 are resolutions that pertain to the recertification of nine centers and institutes across three CUNY colleges. Mr. Chairman, I present Items 4C1 through 4C9 for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for these items?
Second.
Any discussion? Now move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Those items are approved.
Item 4D1 is a resolution to award Zolia Morel with early tenure at Lehman College with an application of bylaw 6.2C2. Mr. Chairman, I present item 4D1 for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? Let's move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item 4E is a resolution requesting approval of the Faculty Personnel Matters Report of the Education Policy Committee. The report was generated in summary format from faculty data entered by the campuses into CUNY First, the university's system of record, between September 1, 2023 and October 13, 2023. Mr. Chairman, I present item 4E for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? Let's move to a vote. All those in favor? Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item 4F is a resolution requesting approval of the Actions in the Curriculum and Academic Policy Dashboard Report. Mr. Chairman, I present item 4F for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? Let's move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Items 4G1 through 4G5 are resolutions to award immediate tenure to faculty at two CUNY institutions, Hunter College and John Jay College, with an application of bylaw 6.2B.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? Move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee. Item number five, Committee on Advancement and External Affairs. I call on Committee on Advancement and External Affairs Chair Lorraine Cortez-Vasquez to present and move the following items.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Board Committee for Advancement and External Affairs considered the following matters at its meeting on November 20, 23, which was presided over by its Vice Chair, Ken Sunshine. And I present these items to the board. Item 5A is a resolution requesting the naming of the Taina Leon Chair of Music at Brooklyn College. Mr. Chairman, I present item 5A for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? Let's move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item 5B is a resolution requesting the naming of Virginia Osgar Endowment Education Fund at the College of Staten Island. Mr. Chairman, I present item 5B for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? Let's move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item 5C is a resolution requesting the naming of the Jennifer Stannieri Endowment Scholarship Fund at the College of Staten Island. I understand that the Stannieri, and please forgive me, I pronounced your name wrong, has joined us today and would like to acknowledge the members of the family and their generous $100,000 gift to honor Jennifer Stannieri, who was a theater technician for more than 17 years at the college and served as a mentor for generations of performers.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
I appreciate your generosity.
My wife was a CSI graduate, Richmond College graduate. She worked there, and students were always first. How we feel to best like to be remembered.
Again, thank you so much. Item 5C has been presented for the board's consideration. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this item?
If you don't mind indulging, Mr. Chair, I just want to thank the Stannieri family, who I've been friends with for many decades. And Jennifer Stannieri is a wonderful person, ran the Black Box Theater for so many years, shepherded thousands of thespians across the stage. And I know them from the artistic and the artistic community on Staten Island. This is just a sliver of their generosity. And I'm just lucky and privileged to know them and to have CUNY be the beneficiary of that involvement. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Arminides. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 5D is a resolution.
We have to go. We're so sorry.
All of the items. Let's move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions?
Item 5D is a resolution requesting the naming of the Janine Singer Einhorn Group Study Room at the Leon and Toby Cooperman Library at Hunter College. Mr. Chairman, I present item 5D for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item? Any discussion? We'll move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Yeah, this one moved us because we thought that this is a good model for many people on the Board of Trustees to probably consider. Item 5E is a resolution requesting the naming of the Ask Me Lillian Roberts Endowment Scholarship Fund at the CUNY School of Labor and Urban Studies. I present item 5E for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item? Any discussion? The only thing I will say is I was honored to know Lillian Roberts, as many of us at this table were. A great leader, a great human being. And we do CUNY a great honor by having her name attached to a scholarship fund.
I second that.
So do I. And then the next one is Longo Stannieri.
Okay, we have an item in front of us. Item 5E. Any other conversation, any discussion? We'll move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
This is another one that is like the Lillian Roberts Fund. And again, Board of Trustees can be moved to do something similar in their family's name or in their own name. It's a resolution requesting the naming of the Dr. Marilyn Aguijera Molina and Dr. Carlos Molina Health Equity Scholarship Fund at the CUNY Graduate Center of Public Health and Health Policy. And so I present 5F to the board for consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Now move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee. The Committee on Facilities Planning and Management met today, and I'd like to make a motion to add an item they approved for consideration by the board today. I'll ask the secretary to read the resolution. We'll first vote to add the item and then take a vote on the item itself. Gail, could you please read the resolution?
Item 6 is a resolution to authorize construction for Phase II cafeteria and kitchen renovation at Queensborough Community College, stated today. Resolution reads as follows. Whereas the City University Construction Fund, CUCF, is authorized to provide and manage the capital improvements to the facilities and support the educational purposes of the City University of New York, the University of CUNY. And whereas the dormitory authority in the state of New York, DASNY, is also authorized to provide and manage capital improvements to university facilities in accordance with the terms of any agreement entered into by DASNY and CUCF and to issue bonds to finance the capital cost of such capital improvements. And whereas CUCF, DASNY, and the university entered into a program management agreement on June 30, 2008, the program management agreement pursuant to which CUCF can select which capital projects are managed by CUCF or DASNY. And whereas Phase I of the Cafeteria and Kitchen Project at Queensborough Community College has reached completion, known as the Queensborough Cafeteria and Kitchen Project Phase I. And whereas the Queensborough Phase II Cafeteria and Kitchen Project requires the expansion of food services and full enclosures of the courtyard area and indoor dining space. And whereas the Queensborough Phase II Cafeteria and Kitchen Project will include a new commercial kitchen at the cellar level and full renovation expansion of the existing serving stations on the first floor and a new two-stop hydraulic elevator, which will provide access between the kitchen and the serving stations for food service staff. And whereas the Queensborough Phase II Cafeteria and Kitchen Project will also include new food service equipment, lighting, HVAC, sprinkler, and fire alarm systems. And whereas the modernization expansion of the cafeteria and kitchen will improve food services for the students and staff at Queensborough. And whereas CUCF selected DASNY pursuant to the program management agreement to manage the Queensborough Phase II Cafeteria and Kitchen Project. And DASNY retained the design services of Gachau Architects and Architect Consultant to provide design services and construction administration services for the Queensborough Phase II Cafeteria and Kitchen Project. And whereas the design of the Queensborough Phase II Cafeteria and Kitchen Project is completed, bids have been solicited and received. The university is ready to proceed to construction. And estimates that the total cost for the Queensborough Phase II Cafeteria and Kitchen Project will be $21,550,143. And whereas New York State and New York City have appropriated capital funding to CUCF in the current and prior fiscal year sufficient for CUCF to designate an amount not to exceed $21,550,143 for the Queensborough Phase II Cafeteria and Kitchen Project. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York request CUCF to authorize DASNY to proceed to construction and complete the Queensborough Phase II Cafeteria and Kitchen Project and be it further resolved that the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York request CUCF to provide capital funding for the Queensborough Phase II Cafeteria and Kitchen Project in an amount not to exceed $21,550,143. Explanation as follows. The Queensborough Phase II Cafeteria and Kitchen Project will replace the outdated kitchen and cafeteria space that can no longer meet the requirements of the student population. The project includes the expansion of food services and full enclosure of the courtyard area in an outdoor indoor dining space. There will be a new commercial kitchen at the cellar level and full renovation expansion of the existing servery on the first floor. A new two-stop hydraulic elevator will provide access between the kitchen and serving stations for food service staff. The Queensborough cafeteria space is approximately 16,000 square feet, and the project will bring the cafeteria and kitchen into a state of good repair. The Queensborough Phase II Cafeteria and Kitchen Project construction is anticipated to commence in January 2024 and be substantially completed by August 2025. The program management agreement requires DASNY to comply with and report on the applicable MWBE and SDVOB goals.
Please give you the second. I'd like to make a motion to add item 6 to our agenda. May I have a second?
Second.
Move to a vote on that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Item 6 has been added. I'd like to move item number 6. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the item? All right, we'll now move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Item number 6 has been approved. The chancellor has asked. The chancellor has asked the board to consider four additional resolutions. I'll ask the secretary to read each resolution for the record, and then we'll first vote to add the item and then take a vote on the item itself. Gail?
Item 7 is a resolution to approve the online training grievance settlement with the Professional Staff Congress CUNY dated December 11. It reads as follows. Whereas the City University of New York, University of CUNY, when faced with the COVID-19 public health emergency in spring 2020, transitioned all in-person student classes to online classes in the interest of the health, safety, and welfare of the university's students, faculty, and staff. And whereas as a result of the university's transition from offering in-person classes to offering student courses and classes in an online format, the university needed to provide online training support and assistance to faculty to enable such faculty to teach such courses and assist them in making such transition to an online format. And whereas a dispute arose between the university and those represented by the Professional Staff Congress CUNY, the PSC, over the efficacy of the implementation of the online training protocol and the protocol's compliance with the collective bargaining agreement between the PSC and the university. And whereas in June 2020, the PSC filed a contract grievance, the online training contract, training, against the university concerning the online training protocol that occurred during the spring/summer 2020 semester, alleging, among other things, that the university had failed to appropriately compensate certain faculty who participated in the online training protocol during such period. And whereas the university and the PSC have negotiated in good faith to settle such dispute and to identify those faculty who asserted that they should have been reasonably compensated for such online training protocol for such period. And whereas the university and the PSC have in fact identified those faculty who have been determined to qualify to receive such compensation from such online training protocol as heretofore described. And whereas in full settlement, mutual release from any further liability, the university and the PSC have agreed to settle any and all claims, disputes, and controversies from the beginning of time to the date of this resolution in connection with the online training contract grievance, with such settlement to be in the amount of $1,733,894, whereby each of the qualifying faculty members identified in the proposed settlement will receive a one-time payment of $900, less any amounts heretofore paid to such qualifying faculty members. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York approves of the proposed full and complete settlement of all claims and mutual releases of all parties in connection with that certain online training contract grievance in the amount of $1,733,894 to be paid out in accordance with the terms and conditions of said proposed settlement agreement and be it further resolved that the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York authorizes the Senior Vice Chancellor for Legal Affairs and General Counsel, or is his designee, to execute, seal, and deliver a settlement agreement by and between the university and the PSC on such terms and conditions as he deems reasonably necessary and appropriate in full and complete settlement of that certain online training contract grievance in accordance with the foregoing resolution.
I'd like to make a motion to add item 7 to our agenda. May I have a second?
So moved.
Let's move on to vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Item 7 has been added. I'd like to now move item number 7. May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on this item? We'll now move forward on a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Item 7 has been approved.
Item 8 is a resolution to appoint Claudia Schrader as interim president of York College dated December 11, 2023. York College, dated December 11th, 2023. Reads as follows: Whereas Dr. Claudia Schrader has been the president of Kingsborough Community College, the College or KCC, since September 2018. Has held leadership roles at three colleges, the City University of New York, the University, and has served the university for over 20 years. And whereas President Schrader oversaw the launch of KCC Flex, one of the university's earliest online hybrid degree programs that offers adult learners an affordable flexible way to complete a degree using a mix of online and in-person courses. And whereas President Schrader also shepherded the unveiling of the college's first satellite location at Chesna Commons, an affordable housing complex in Brooklyn's Cypress Hills neighborhood, making higher education more accessible to residents of every corner of Brooklyn. And whereas President Schrader secured the largest single donation of its kind in the college's history, a $1 million gift establishing the Leonard and Louise Rigio Scholarship Fund, providing two years of full tuition for 100 students. And whereas during her tenure, the college secured $13 million in workforce development funds forging partnerships with Amazon, software developer Promeno Tech, and cannabis education provider Greenflower, among others. And whereas prior to becoming president in Kingsborough Community College, Dr. Schrader served as provost and senior vice president for academic and student success at Bronx Community College, as associate provost at William Patterson University in New Jersey, and as associate provost at Medgar Evers College, where she also held a tenure and appointment as a professor of education and served as her department's deputy chair. And whereas President Schrader was one of 25 leaders selected for the Aspen Institute's College Excellence Programs, Aspen New President's Fellowship, and she has been inducted into the Rutgers African American Alumni Alliance Hall of Fame. And whereas Dr. Schrader has a BA from Rutgers University and an MA, Masters of Education, and an EDD, all from Teachers College, Columbia University, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York appoint Claudia Schrader as interim president of York College, effective January 8, 2024 through January 7, 2025, with an annual compensation of $330,000 subject to financial ability. Explanation as follows: President Schrader's strong and enthusiastic leadership, combined with her warmth and accessibility, has helped fulfill the missions of both the City University of New York and Kingsborough Community College to serve all members of its diverse community and provide high-quality, affordable, innovative student-centered academics. The university will launch a national search for York's next permanent leader beginning the spring semester in accordance with the university's guidelines for presidential searches and the bylaws of the Board of Trustees. The chancellor highly recommends this interim appointment until such time as a search can be completed.
I'd like to make a motion to add item eight to our agenda. May I have a second?
Second.
Let's move forward on that. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Item eight has been added. I now would like to move item number eight. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this item?
Just to know and continue the guidance and the leadership of Dr. Schrader, and have seen her in action at Kingsborough, and have just the greatest opportunity and the success for the students at York College, and thank you for taking on that role.
Can I have two more there?
I would just like to say that I encourage Dr. Schrader to leave Bronx Community College and try Kingsborough Community College. So I have been watching her career, her warmth, and her embrace of student is nothing to sneeze at, as we would say in the Caribbean, nothing to sneeze at. She is very involved, both the students, faculty, and staff, and I think she will do well in Queens. It's a natural nest where she can have eggs and crack some chickens over there. This is some Caribbean talk. Oh, if you're from the Caribbean, you know what I said. If you're not, I'll give you some explanation later on. But I think that she will crack some chickens and lay some eggs over there, and I think we will all be proud of them.
I was hearing all of these accolades and even some of the personal qualities, but I think what distinguishes her above so many, and thank you for making this choice, Chancellor, is not only her emotional intelligence, but her philanthropic choices and her service to community beyond just the university, but also when she took on Kingsborough, it was a hot mess, and I could say that because we were on the search committee, and she was...
Is that a technical phrase?
That's also a Caribbean phrase. But she was...
We got them going. We got them going.
It was an exceptional tenure, and so I just can expect much more from you and looking forward to it. So thank you for taking this on, but thank you for everything you've done for us so far.
Yes, sir.
If I could have one final Caribbean voice to be accolades, thank you, Claudia, for your great leadership, your current role at Kingsborough, and previously, you are an outstanding leader, an outstanding CUNY citizen. And I know they're going to miss you at Kingsborough, and all the folks that you are excited that you're coming after the great leadership that Bernicia had there. So thank you for all that. And for those of you who follow social media, just beware that the welcome wagon is leaving Brooklyn and moving to Queens.
Let's move to any other comments? Let's move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Congratulations.
Item nine is a resolution of appreciation for the president of York College, Bernicia Johnson Eens, dated today, and it reads as follows: Whereas Dr. Bernicia Johnson Eens was appointed president of York College, the college, by the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York, the university, effective August 1st, 2020, after having served as interim president since September 2019. And whereas during her tenure, President Eens accomplished several long and short-term goals, including the completion of York's strategic plan, which comprises of three main pillars: undergraduate's who thrive and graduate, inclusive signature programs, and vibrant community and campus spirit, and serves as a hallmark of her tenure and beyond for the next 10 years. And whereas President Eens has been a champion of One York, emphasizing that every member of the campus community is valued for their contributions. And whereas, under her leadership, the college adopted the university's Accelerate, Compete, Engage, the ACE, support program to promote timely completion of degrees, established a mentoring collective initiative, and opened a one-stop welcome center to support former students who are looking to re-enroll through the CUNY Reconnect Initiative. And whereas President Eens also oversaw the completion of 11 capital improvement and infrastructure upgrades totaling more than $100 million, with six additional projects in the works. And whereas the York College Foundation established fundraising records during her tenure at the college, including an increase of more than 35% in the past academic year. And whereas in December 2021, President Eens was named to the prestigious National Collegiate Athletic Association and NCAA Division III Presidents Council, representing the City University of New York Athletic Conference. And whereas President Eens also served as vice president for Student Affairs at John Jay College of Criminal Justice from 2006 to 2012, now therefore be it resolved that the members of the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York express their sincere thanks and appreciation to President Bernicia Johnson Eens for her service as president of York College and to the City University of New York. We congratulate President Eens on her accomplishments and wish her well in her future endeavors.
I'd like to make a motion to add item nine to our agenda. May I have a second?
So moved.
To add the item, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? The item has been added. I now would like to move item number nine. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the item?
I would just like to express my gratitude to the president for all the work she did during COVID in extending the college to the entire community, because my sister is a beneficiary of the COVID shot at the college. So I know that beyond the academic and everything else, she extends herself to the community itself.
Excellent.
And I want to thank her and wish her well, and know that she will carry with her her own personality and her own goodwill to make sure that she's a success wherever she goes.
Excellent. Lorraine?
I just also want to thank the president, you know. Graduation ceremonies are always a high note, and they're wonderful, and the families are great, and the students are happy. But there's some that really distinguish themselves, and York College's graduation ceremony does just that. I mean, the spirit, the joy, but what was most impressive was the love of community outside of the students, the community that came and made remarks, including high-level officials who just gave some... I remember Adrian Adams just gave her father's memoirs to the college, but it wasn't that. That was moving, there wasn't a dry eye, but it was just the love that was in that room and the sense of community that she brings to the university is something to be modeled and bottled, if we could. So congratulations and best of everything in your future endeavors.
And just to add to that, if I remember correctly, President Eens was the interim there, and the community rallied in ways that I haven't seen to really push in and ask CUNY to make her the permanent.
Yeah.
So it is a great example for the CUNY system as a whole. Chancellor, anything?
I'll just add my appreciation to Bernicia, and I know that we wish her all great success in LA, but should those Californias not be fully appreciative of your talent, the door is always open for you here in New York, so thank you.
And we don't have earthquakes.
Item nine has been added and has been moved and seconded. We'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Item nine has been approved.
Okay, last step. Item number 10 is a resolution to amend the existing authorization regarding the agreement for the gift from Leonard A. Lauder to endow and name the Evelyn Lauder Community Care Nurse Practitioner Program, dated today, whereas on December 12th, 2022, the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York, University or CUNY, voted unanimously to accept a gift of $52 million from Leonard A. Lauder, the Lauder Gift, to fund an endowment to support the establishment of the Evelyn Lauder Community Care Nurse Practitioner Program, the Nurse Practitioner Program, at a Hunter College. And whereas the terms and conditions of the Lauder Gift are contained in the gift agreement, the Lauder Gift Agreement, dated October 20th, 2022, between the Hunter College Foundation and Leonard A. Lauder and Joel S. Bernkrantz as the trustees of the Leonard A. Lauder 2013 revocable trust, the Lauder Trustees. And whereas Hunter College and the Lauder Trustees have determined that it would be beneficial to the Nurse Practitioner Program for Hunter College's School of Nursing to create an advisory committee, the advisory committee, to report to and advise the dean of Hunter College School of Nursing regarding the design, implementation, and ongoing conduct of the Nurse Practitioner Program. Whereas Section 8 of the Lauder Gift Agreement requires the Hunter College Foundation to provide to the Lauder Trustees on an annual basis and within 30 days after the issuance of the audited financial statements for the Hunter College Foundation's most recently completed fiscal year, a written report that includes financial and programmatic information as specified in such Section 8. Whereas Hunter College and the Lauder Trustees have determined that it would be beneficial to enhance the reporting required by Section 8 of the Lauder Gift Agreement by including, one, the name of each new graduate of the Nurse Practitioner Program during the fiscal year covered by the report, and, two, a numerical summary of the fellows, as such term is defined in the Lauder Gift Agreement, who began, completed, or withdrew from the Nurse Practitioner Program during such fiscal year collectively the enhanced reporting. And whereas Hunter College, the Lauder Trustees, and the Hunter College Foundation desire that the Lauder Gift Agreement be amended to make provision for the advisory committee and the enhanced reporting. And whereas the amended provisions regarding the advisory committee and the enhanced reporting are memorialized in an agreement dated as of December 5th, 2023, between the Hunter College Foundation and the Lauder Trustees, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York accepts the amendment of the Lauder Gift Agreement to make provision for the advisory committee and the enhanced reporting on such terms and conditions as shall have been reviewed and approved by the university for and on behalf of and in the name of Hunter College and the Office of the General Counsel and Senior Vice Chancellor of Legal Affairs of the university. The explanation is as follows: Leonard Lauder made this transformative and historic gift of $52 million to support the establishment of the Evelyn Lauder Community Care Nurse Practitioner Program at Hunter College in honor of his late wife, Evelyn Lauder, a proud Hunter College high school and Hunter College alumna who graduated from the college in 1958. This game-changing donation is the largest ever philanthropic gift to a single CUNY school. These amendments to the Lauder Gift Agreement will further clarify operational requirements involved in the administration of the Lauder Gift.
I'd like to make a motion to add item 10 to our agenda. May I have a second?
Second.
We'll now move forward on a vote on that. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Item 10 has been added. I'd like to move item number 10. May I have a second for that?
Second.
Any discussion on the item? Yes.
First of all, congratulations. I'm so glad we've gotten here. I have to acknowledge this exceptional leadership and work of the Hunter president, the Hunter dean of nursing, for their work, and the Office of the General Counsel for getting us to this point, and for ensuring that we have the best possible way to proceed with this incredibly generous and historic kind of gift that we have gotten in this university. So I just want to... This would not be possible without their leadership, and I want to just thank them for that.
Thank you, trustee.
I echo our Chair of Advancement and the team that was put forth to work on the Lauder Foundation program, and the particular areas that this will cover with the Leonard Lauder Foundation funding, and what this really means for CUNY and for New York to have probably going forward the most advanced nursing practitioner program in the country. Being a former nurse and being a former graduate of the Hunter College Nursing Program was incredibly honored to know that this is going forward, and the success of the fellows and the nursing program that we have bestowed on New York. So once again, thank you, Lorraine, for your incredible hard work and everyone's diligence, along with the Chair, our Chair and Chancellor and the Chancellery and folks here that really, really may have the opportunity, along with the presidents, happen here. So it's the success in the future and the vision that we now have for New York in terms of the Nurse Practitioner Program.
Excellent. Any other comments? Any other discussion? All right, we'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Item 10 has been approved. There being no further business, I ask for a motion to adjourn our meeting. Second, all of those in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you.